You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the July 19th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by going to www dot access LaPorte County dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Today is July 19th, our second meeting of the month. Welcome to our meeting. Make sure your phones are silenced. We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence and also we just want to, in this moment of silence, recognize we've had, you know, people impacted by death, this death due to homicide, but also just COVID numbers are rising. We've seen more structural fires. There's a lot going on in America and in our community today. So I just want us to take a moment of silence to recognize that and keep everybody in your thoughts. And for those that are religious, in your prayers.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And also a moment of silence tonight for the passing of our longtime clerk, Thomas Feder.
Yes, and we did that last meeting as well. So, yes, Mr. Tom Feder. So if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence. All right, Ms. Nyleb on the, on the roll.
Dabney? Mr. Dabney?
He's attempting to get on, so we'll recognize him when he's able to get on.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Matt?
Present.
Ms. Deitch?
Present.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Present.
And Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have nine present and no one else.
All right, thank you. All right, on to the approval of the minutes, the approval of our hybrid Zoom July 5th, 2022 council meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes. Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Pribulinski, a second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, Ms. Nyleb on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney. We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. On to reports of standing, standing committees. Are there any reports of any standing committees? No reports of standing committees? All right, we will move on to the Finance Committee meeting and recognize that we are doing the Claims Docket doing her presentation and then I'll call for a vote after you talk about the claims.
Thank you, Madam President. Claims Docket for July 19th, 2022, we have Riverboat Funds number 2042 in the amount of $11,530. Riverboat EFT, $0. Boyd Development Fund, 2031, $0. Total claims, $11,530. This claim is for accounts payable, Hariba Instruments Incorporated, which is for materials for the Michigan City Police Department, which is for the Handscope LED forensic light source kit. And that is all claims that we have.
All right, thank you. So again, we have Claims Docket Fund 2042 for $11,530 for total claims for today, $11,530. I will ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
The motion by Councilman Don Pribulinski, a second by Councilman Paul Pribulinski, Ms. Nyleb on the vote.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Always here.
Yes.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyleb. Any reports to special or select committees? All right, with that being said, I will welcome Mrs. Janet Butner to give us our 2022 annual report for the Promise Scholarship.
Good evening. I'm Janet Butner, the Promise Scholarship Director, and I appreciate the council giving me a chance to update you on what has been happening. So I gave everyone a folder that has the report for the year. And I'll just go through it briefly, and if you have any questions. As all of you know, there were some big changes to the program this year with adding the renters and also adding Marquette High School to the program. So included in this report, first I have the list of students who received the Promise Scholarship during the 21-22 academic year. The class of 2018 was really very small, down to only three members. The class of 2019, 2020, and then 2021 was a little larger. I look back on this and we do lose students almost every year. A few of them due to grades, a few of them decide to drop out. And we've had a few, I think there were two during the last year, whose parents moved out of the city too. So all of those things play into it. And now we're starting to see a few students finish in three years. And even with this year's class, I know there's a few that are going on for just one year at Ivy Tech to finish up a technical program. So that we're losing students each year is not necessarily always a bad thing. It's to be expected. But I went through and looking at the total that was paid out for the 21-22 academic year, And, you know, there are some students who do only receive a portion of the eligible amount due to other scholarships that they might be receiving. So that's something I look at every time I start to get their tuition statements. Now, the class of 2022, you can see it's a longer list. I'll explain a little bit about that breakdown. And we did, I think, anticipate that we would have more students with adding the additional school and also renters. Before we go to that, I have that graph where I showed each year how many students we started with. And interestingly enough, the last three years, and even this year, out of the total number, we have about 2021 every year whose parents own homes. And so that was kind of interesting to look at that. And as we go forward, I'll continue to break that down so we know where all the students are coming from. So next I went into the evaluation of the class of 2022 at Michigan City High School. In the fall, they give me the list of all the students with a GPA of 2.5 or higher. Then I go and start to sort through determining which ones live in the city limits and which ones don't. And that reduces the number. Now, this year I also had to look at ones who had a Michigan City address, did not appear to be a homeowner, so were probably renters. And the number of homeowners is just about the same as last year, 63 students. And then 67 that I identified as rental properties. Then unfortunately, this was passed at the end of November and I had to get all the materials ready. And as we know, January, February was a very difficult time with COVID numbers and not being able to get into the school. But by March, I was finally able to get into the school, start to meet with the students, have them fill out their information sheet. And, you know, when I meet with students, some of them are very clear. They don't want to go to college. Some of them plan to go out of state, although with the change in the ordinance, they could appeal that. So even with that, I encourage them still apply. Plus, if you change your mind, you might still want to be enrolled in the program if you decide to come back to Indiana. So going through that whole list by the time, this is at Michigan City High School, there were about 77 students attending class in person at the high school. And of those, 28 students applied. One lived out of the city, one applied late. So there were 26 students accepted, 21 were homeowners, and five were renters. I had hoped we would maybe reach more renters. Then, once I get into the next part, I'll tell you some of the ways I'm trying to reach out to them. Then this was our first year at Marquette High School. Their senior class had 42 students. 32 lived out of the city limits. So there were only 10 students who lived inside the city limits that would even qualify. Five living in rental properties, five as homeowners, and several of them going out of state. It ended up six students applied and were accepted, four of those homeowners, two of those renters. And at both Michigan City High School and at Marquette, there was one student at each school who was going out of state who did appeal. And I have to say, the one that was very impressive, that student came to our Exceptions Committee meeting, did an excellent job of presenting the case of why she was attending out of state. So I'll continue to encourage those students. So next I go into how I tried to meet up with these students. As I said, I couldn't go in until March. At the Michigan City High School, I started to go in two days a week. I was able to meet with most 80 of the students in person. I give them a folder that has all the information, all the forms. Students that were in the virtual situation or graduated early, I sent letters to the parents. And even after I met the students, I sent an information letter to the parents and also another one to the student to try to stay in contact with them. And then in May, I started going again to the school to try to get the students to turn in their completed forms. And kind of the same approach at Marquette High School, but not as often. There were not that many students. One of the really effective tools that I did this year, and I am going to try to develop a series of postcards, sending out just this postcard. It got their attention. Only about 5% of junk mail is opened, so a postcard, they don't have to open it. And it takes one step out of it. And I think there were at least five parents who came walking in to meet with me with their postcard in hand. Like, what do I need to do? So I want to start that earlier because I think that is effective and it does get their attention. Nobody has to open it. It can go to the students and the parents. So I'm going to work on that because that seemed to be a very effective way to reach parents, maybe more so even than the students. So the next page, I do a review of all of our payments from 2017 to 2022. We're under the million mark, but it's getting close. $861,000. 861,618, 8,000, they say 8,061,618. And then the other thing I did, because I feel to be comfortable with this, we want to make sure there's always the maximum amount of money in the Promise Scholarship Fund for the students that are in the fund. So I went through, like, the next four years. We will probably not spend this much money because we know some students will not do the whole four years, some may not need all of it. But still looking at what could be the potential at this point. And $948,000. So I think that's something, you know, every year I want to look at, you know, as the council want to look at to see where we're at as far as the maximum that could be given to the students. Then I include, included the balance sheet, which we still have close to $3.5 million in there, which I know it seems like a lot, but if we look at this program growing and expanding and also took out the requirement that they attend the seventh and eighth grade in the school system. So we're going to have more and more students getting in the maximum 5,000 a year, which is something else to take into consideration. And then the last couple pages, this was actually from the Economic Development report that they had found from the census. And I just found it was interesting looking at, you know, in 2020, the number of students who are going to college. The 40%, I'm not sure what's happening to the other 60%. And if it is a financial reason, we can help with that. But I, that's the problem. We have the statistic, but we don't know the reason. So continuing to try to reach these students. So over the next few months, as I get ready for the next year, some of the things I wanted to do is get to meet the students earlier. They're having a college camp for seniors at Michigan City High School on the 29th, so I'll go to that. I'm working on promoting the Promise Scholarship and our community sites, encouraging students to wear their Promise Scholarship T-shirts. If any of you would like one, just stop by and let me know. As I mentioned before, I want to start the three-part postcard campaign. Also in your packet, I included the rack cards, which I want to get out and leave these at businesses, places where they'll pick them up. One of the counselors suggested taking them to where the parents work, which probably a good idea. They'll let me leave some rack cards there. Also checking with the water department about putting a mailer in their bills to reach more people that way. And I asked students, I asked parents, I asked the counselors, what do kids like? What would get their attention? It's been a long time since I've been in high school. And they said, kids like stickers because they put them on their Chromebooks. They put them on things. So I'm working on getting some Promise Scholarship stickers and also community service stickers. So we'll see how that goes, but if that's what the students like, we'll, we'll see how it goes. So I'm gonna get those ordered. I might have them in time for the 29th. I'm not sure. And also, our website, the city website needs improving, the Promise Scholarship one definitely needs improving. We discussed that with Yvonne, talked to Andy Matanik last week and to see what we can do to bring that up to date, make it more user-friendly and hopefully have it a little bit easier for parents and students to access. So I know, Gail, I took more than two minutes. Any, any questions?
Any, any questions? Thank you. I, I have a comment. Thank you again. I think this is one of the best reports we get every year. So it helps in, in seeing what money has been spent. But also the demographics of what we send. And I was one of those people at that postcard. I was like, ooh, this is a great postcard, to, to just give you that, that quick reminder. And I, only other question I had was, I had someone reach out to me and, and maybe you can help with this. How does a organization get on the list? Because I think, do they have to be on the list to, to be able to have people do community service?
Just contact me and occasionally they'll contact me even about a special event. I post that on the Facebook page and students, like, maybe they had a student go and want to do it. Their community service there. They can always call me and I can approve it. But that's the other thing. I, I can't add anything to my list, but I wanted to get out to the community service sites and see how things are going, see how it's working with students. We have some, what I would call, regular sites where students go all the time. And if you were, they just go occasionally, but just have them give me a call and then do that.
All right, all right. We have, I saw, yes, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one request. Is it possible that the LaPorte County 4D Child Support Office can receive a pack of those cards?
Oh.
For our four year?
The rack cards?
Yes.
Definitely. Yes. I will get, would you like me just to put them in your mailbox?
Yes.
Okay, definitely. That would be great.
Yes, Councilman Don Pribulinski.
Yeah, Janet, very good report, very informative. And I think this is actually new in your, in a report where it says how many, or college enrollment over time and how the college enrollment has actually gone down since 2010. It was at 58 and now we're at 40%.
Oh, the last report that I included from the census.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's good information for myself. Kind of tells me what the students are doing, why they're doing it. I don't know, different reasons. And I'm not necessarily worried about that. That also tells me that the, the funding of this program is where it needs to be. And I don't think we have to increase the funding anymore out of the city budget. With $3.5 million in this program, I think we can go away, go a while yet a long time period without having to increase that.
And that's why.
Add anymore to it.
And that's why I included where we're at now, if everybody got the maximum amount. And something that probably should be looked at every year, but yes, it's.
Yeah, and just one more comment. I'm still proud of the vote I made and proud of the vote that the city council made that we included the renters and we also included students from Marquette. I believe by looking at this report right here, I think it tells the tale that we're not hurting the public school system, but we are actually reaching out and trying to help another segment of Michigan City. Thank you.
And just to add to that, in that decline in enrollment, I know LaPorte County is one of the lowest college attainments in, in the state. And also understand too, with a lot of the programs that have left that really truly were pipeline programs for the school system as far as teachers and different things were moved from Westville to Hammond and Ivy Tech, from Michigan City to Valpo. I know they're working hard to bring those back, but not having local presence for our students really hurts our students. And so all of us should be pushing PNW and Ivy Tech to bring programs back here locally because that really truly has happened over the last 10 years that, that decline, those programs have been moved away from Michigan City. Yes, Councilwoman Jacobs.
Yes, I just wanted to, something came to mind when you mentioned the volunteer opportunities. A leadership LaPorte County has a volunteer fair. Are you familiar with that?
I, I've heard about it, yes.
All right. So maybe you want to reach out with them and kind of touch base with them because they have a bunch of community organizations that need volunteers. They get together, so maybe there'd be more opportunity for you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any, any comments from the council members online before I come back to any comments? Just want to make sure I don't forget because I gotta look over at you to make sure you, any comments? Okay, you're good. You're good. All right, Councilman Paul Pribulinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms., Ms. Butner, I got a question with your statistical data. Did you put anything together to track the changes that we made in the ordinance so it could get reported back to us? Because there was such a debate about including students from the parochial systems that, you know, I don't really see any data in there. Did you, have you been tracking that? If they went to parochial schools and then went to the high school?
That information I haven't tracked.
Yeah.
And I could go back and do it for the previous years, but we're not tracking seventh and eighth grade anymore. So they're not putting down where they went to.
Could you, could you create a system? Because that's one question that I have. And then is there any way that we've been tracking any of these students? And if they've come back to the community? And if they, if their parents are still, if they're still residents? I, to me, that's important to know how this thing's developing because it was promoted to create home ownership in the city of Michigan City. And I think that whether you and Clarence Holtz get together and create a tracking system, I think it's important data for us. I really do.
I can track the seventh and eighth graders. I can ask that question. Looking at their plans afterwards, we only had three graduates this year. And two of them are going on to grad school and one is returning to the community. So that's good. I will continue to, I can include that in a report.
Well, okay. What I'm getting at is this. Look at your, look at your data, and I think maybe that we need to include that in a change in the ordinance that they have to update their data to us at, you know, afterwards, when, when they get out, what their parents did. Are the people who were renting still here? Okay, thanks.
Just to address your question a little bit more, Councilman, I do send usually in the end of April, beginning of May, the letters to the students that are in the program with their application and updates. And if those are returned to me, that's how I know that the parents have possibly moved and the student hasn't updated me. That's a way I can track if the parents are still living in Michigan City. And we last, actually, the previous year, we had two students who they were returned to me. I do a little research and find the parents sold their homes and moved out of the city. So that's something, I, I can include that in the report too, if you'd like. But we do track to make sure parents are still in the city.
Yes, Councilman Michael Mack.
Just real quick, this was excellent, outstanding information. This page on the census track is, I just want to make sure I'm seeing this correct. This is not about the students. It's about the households, one of the last pages.
Correct, yeah.
This is the existing households of, of, of the entire city that's eligible, I guess. The concerning part to me is the high school because we only broke it down basically black and white and then, you know, other to a degree. And those are the two big numbers. But no high school, a home with no high school. Is that no parent in the high school has a diploma? When it says no high school, I'm assuming that's high school diploma?
This is from the US Census report. I didn't gather this information myself. But I thought it would be interesting to look at that and.
No, this is just very interesting. Exactly. I'm just, the term HSD is a high school diploma and it's, I believe it's saying that 9.7% of the white households in. That nine point seven percent of the white households in Michigan City that we're speaking of. Don't have hi- high school diplomas and that's about the parents. And then sixteen point five percent of the black households don't have high school. And then you go over to bachelor's degree of high or higher. Twenty percent of the highs, uh, twenty percent of the parents in these homes, in the white families have uh. Bachelors and only seven point nine percent. So, I mean, I don't know if there's anything or nothing we can do with it, but that, it just fascinates me and the expectation of what comes in the. Next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, if those type of disparities aren't actually, you know. Um, aggressively done, but it's, it's not our purview to do it, but that was just interesting, but this is very outstanding. Thank you.
And, and Councilman, you bring that up, I mentioned earlier the one student. Who was going out of state and appealed and it was accepted. And that student shared, both of her parents were here from Mexico. The father had completed sixth grade, the mother had some high school education. That student would be the first one in her family going to college. And I look at that, the student had a very particular program she wanted to go into. Found it at Iowa State and very determined, wants to come back to Michigan City. All, all the families here. And I look at that, that's really given this student an opportunity, being able to help the student. And that student was passionate enough about it that she came, presented the case to us. And doesn't have anyone in her family to help. You know, so that's. When we, when I get to know the students, you see those stories. And some of them could still go to college without the help, but someone. There's one student in the program, has had enough twenty-first century scholarships. Other scholarships to go to PNW, has not taken a single penny yet. Continues to do community service, wants to stay in the program. Said she doesn't know what may happen, so gets the community service done, stays in the program. May never need any money at all, but wants it to be there just in case.
Right, and how many, how many children uh don't make it? To scholarship conversations because of these type of house, the households there. You know, the, the ones that can overcome those obstacles, they've, they've got some special circumstances, but we've got a lot of children here. That are born into circumstances on, you know, that, that, that are, that are much harder than others, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman, I'm Brian Dabney.
Yeah, real quick, uh, I wasn't gonna make the comment until I heard some of the. Talking about the, the whether or not this is hurting Michigan City area schools, it's really early to tell. Cause we're gonna have to track enrollment numbers from the high school versus what we see now in the seventh and eighth grade levels. Uh, with students possibly moving back to schools, I mean. We don't know what the enrollment's gonna be for fall and everything like that, so over time, we're really gonna have to track and see what happens, how many people. Are uh, what's happening in the Michigan City area schools and then also the U S C enrollments of the parochial school. Um, I mean, obviously, you know, I was in disagreement with us putting the parochial school in there because. I feel that down the line, that is another recruiting tool to take kids out of Michigan City area school system. It is early right now to tell because we don't have enrollment numbers. Uh, coming around from Michigan City area schools, high school level, middle school level, this could even jump down into the uh. Elementary school level, so I hope that uh Councilman Paul and Don Prespolinski are right. Uh, I don't wanna be right on this, but it's the way I feel about it and I hope it does not happen that it hurts the Michigan City area schools, but. Gonna have to track that over time and be able to see that. But I think it's a little early to say that it, it's not hurting of this.
Right, thank you. Um, I have a couple of comments, so um, again, thank you for the presentation, it's always great. Um, one of the things that you presented to us that I thought was helpful was a list of all the. Uh, students that are attending schools outside of Michigan City. Um, like the Westfield New Prairie, and I think um. Sharing that will be helpful because I will be curious if any of those students come back. Um, now that we're, you know, we're doing a little bit more with the renters and, and all of that. It'd be nice to know if any students come back into the system because of the promise scholarship versus not. Because one of the things that um has happened over time, and this is over the last ten years, and having this conversation. Um, with uh some school officials is that um, once families have taken one, their oldest child. Out of the system and move them to another school outside of Michigan City. They're less likely to have their younger students attend the high school here. And they'll continue at that school outside of Michigan City. So that's a trend that's been happening long, as long as promised and prior to promise being a part of. This uh, of funding, so I don't know if everybody knows that, but that has been a trend that has been occurring. Uh, not with the parochial schools, it's with the public schools. So I'm hoping that we see a trend of them coming back to the high school versus. Leaving after middle school and moving on to um schools outside of Michigan City, so. Um, any, any, so thank you again, and um if any, please leave us some cards and. I know, um, Councilman Tillman needs to stack and um appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Did you have a, I, I know that, I'm gonna let you say something, Tommy, I know you have a question. I'm just gonna give privilege on this.
Tommy Kalovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I wanna grant this, express my gratitude to all you uh nine wonderful council members for. For opening up the promise scholarship for all the students, the families who rent. Uh, I'm just gonna say that I'm gonna be needing one of your uh, as a promise scholarship t-shirts, thank you.
Thank you. Had to give a little purpose, alright, thank you so much. Um, any other reports from um the mayor or any other officers um from the city?
Mike Jesneski, Deputy Chief, Michigan City Fire Department. Um, as I'm sure you all know, we experienced a very large structural fire over the weekend. To the best of my knowledge, I think it's the largest fire we've seen in twenty, maybe thirty years, a very large scale fire, um. I just wanna take a moment to publicly commend the efforts of our crews that were on scene. They did an outstanding job at containing the fire considering. How large it was and the fact that by the time we actually got the call, there was smoke and flames already coming through the roof of that building. Um, and I'd also just like to send a special thanks out to the Cool Spring Fire Department. Michigan Shores Fire Department and the Pines Fire Department for coming out and lending a hand and offering up additional resources. Um, at this time, the cause of the fire is still under investigation by the State Fire Marshal. Want to put that out.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And I know that we all, um, we all saw it or got calls and we appreciate everybody that was out there. Um, protecting, you know, the, the surrounding areas because you could see it billowing for miles. So appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Nyla, are there any petitions?
There are no petitions this evening.
Any communications?
And we haven't received any correspondence for the.
What? No communications? This is the first since we've been on the council that we've had zero communications. Nobody wants to talk to us, alright. Um, um, Ms. Nyla, our first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only approving the transfer of the Michigan City Police Department's retired nineteen ninety-three Ford E three fifty. Ambulance to the Michigan City area schools. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney. And co-sponsored by Mr. Don Prespolinski, Ms. Deitch, Mr. Simmons, and Mr. Mack.
Alright, any comments from the sponsors? Yes, Mr.?
Uh, Madam Chairman, yeah, uh, I think this is a great move by the uh Michigan City Police Department. I mean, this is a retired Ford E thirty-five, it's nineteen ninety-three. It's over, what does that make it? Close to thirty years old. And it'll be used for educational purposes, um. I'm assuming they'll do engine work on it, bodywork and those kind of things on it, uh, because I know that. A brand new ambulance is well more updated and sophisticated than old ambulance, so I'm sure that's what you're gonna use it for. And why just send it to the scrapyard, let some students uh learn what's it? And uh, I think it's a great move by the city to give this to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Yes, come to the mic, this, you can either try that microphone or this one and just state your name and address.
Good evening, uh, my name is Marco Odo. I live at one, two, three Hancock. I've owned this house for about the last twenty years. Um, I've had a couple of problems with it in the last.
Oh, Mr. Odo, and we've spoken, so the way the um, the meeting works. Um, right now, we're talking about specifically about this, and so we'll take comments on this issue. Right, and then what we'll do is we'll get to public comment and then we'll let you speak on.
Then you will open the, the floor for everything. Excuse me.
No problem, no problem. Any, any comments on this resolution? No comments from this resolution, um, comments from the council? Comments from the councils? So we have a motion by Councilman Dabney, second by um Sean, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Ms. Deitch? Mr. Don Prespolinski? Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? And Mr. Mack?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Alright, thank you, this passes. Um, second resolution by title only, Ms. Nyla?
A resolution by title only approving submission of application for a grant for the city of Michigan City. From the Indiana Department of Transportation for the twenty twenty-two Community Crossing Matching Grant Program. And supporting the local match for said grant. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul Prabulinski.
Um, Madam Chair, I uh reviewed the uh list that was given to us. And that I um. Believe that it has totally changed from the original list that was worked out off the hazer grant. And I don't know who worked up that new list or how it got worked up. But it was simple enough to use the old, the old list, which I have a copy of. And there's one street that stuck out from the old list, so I knew it wasn't uh, the same list. And that was uh South Wall Bass Street. So a- at this time, I believe that also is, I think that. We should have had a meeting on this uh beforehand. And to find out where we're at, so at this time, I believe that this uh. This thing should be tabled and sent to committee.
Are you moving to table it?
Yes.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor to table it and, and send it to streets, um, and alleys.
Second.
And there's a second by Councilman Don Prabulinski, uh, Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jacobs?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
And Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
Um, this will be tabled until after the um Streets and Alley's co- um, committee meets. And table to the next meeting. Alright, Ms. Nyla, um, second, no, the first ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax. The cop- economic development, formerly known as CED, fund for on-call energy. And engineering services with John A Doyle and Associates and Primera Engineering. And this is introduced um by Ms. Jacobs.
Does sponsor have any comments?
Nothing too much, uh, this is for on-call engineering work that the city needs and we do need engineering work to get. Our major projects done, so I think that's self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Don Prabulinski.
Uh, Madam President, couple of questions and a comment. On some of the work that's been done already. Uh, number one, I don't know why a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Has appeared on this uh ordinance. Uh, number two, what I would like to know is how much of this. Of a hundred and fifty thousand is going to come out of uh this? And go to John Doyle and Associates for doing the uh community crossings work. Which to my understanding, because I called a couple, I called the uh clerk's office, called the attorney's office today. And there was no contract signed with Doyle and Associates to do this work. Uh, the mayor told me that he was gonna have it done by Doyle and Associates. And I even asked him if there was a contract, cause I know the council did not appropriate any money. For this contract. I haven't seen anything as far as John Doyle and Associates. So I don't know how much money Mr. Doyle uh was to be paid. And he has done the work, Mr. Doyle did what he was asked by the mayor. But the process didn't go full circle like it should be. Come to the council, get the money, give it to the company, let them do the work. And then give us the uh, the end result. Uh, with that being said, uh. That's not the way that. The public's money uh should be spent. Uh, it has to be, there was a process for it. To me, the process wasn't followed. And this ordinance, uh. Well, I, I'll talk about that in a minute, but anyway, the process was not followed. And I think the council was circumvented when the council shouldn't have been circumvented. And we should have known upfront what was going on, how much it's gonna cost, get an hourly rate from Mr. Doyle. And at least we can go from there. Uh, and should more bids have gone out for this work? I don't know, I mean, there's other engineering companies also, uh, maybe there's a requirement for more, for more bidding. Uh, the other thing uh that I had a question with, so what does double track work? And I understand uh the city engineer that we have right now. Uh, trying to think of his name right offhand, yeah, yeah, Brad Minnick. So when a double tracking project started, and then when the construction started. I didn't know that the city was gonna have to hire an engineer to follow that whole project. To follow that project on, uh. That project, now how much more money? And this is good, gonna be a while before this project's over, so how much out of this hundred and fifty thousand is Mr. Minnick? Gonna take, and is he gonna be back again for another fifty thousand? How much is this whole project gonna cost the city? And that was never explained to us when this whole thing started. Uh, I thought the city was pretty well. Uh, paid up on its uh part of the debt. And that redevelopment commission, I know was putting some money into it on different projects here and there and trying to make things a little bit better. But I didn't know that the city was gonna be obligated to a quarter of a million dollars in engineering. I don't know, I'd like to get those answers. I don't know, I'd like to get those answers before we move uh move forward. And with with that being said, until we get some answers to those questions, I'd like to table this ordinance.
Second.
We, we have a motion to table um this ordinance second by Councilman Paul Prespolinski. Ms. Nyla upon the vote. Table it to.
When? Next meeting, until we get some answers.
Next meeting, okay. Next meeting.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jacobs?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Hi.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
We have seven in favor and two opposed.
And I will refer this to um the Finance Committee, but as that um it, that at your next Finance Committee that we cover this. And um and try to have the answers uh answered by then. Um and I I see the the mirrors here, so we'll uh make sure we get this over to uh Controller Hoffmaster as well. Thank you. Ms. Nyla, first ordinance by title only on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only creating section two dash four one oh point four in chapter two of the Michigan City Municipal Code to create an Emergency Management Agency, EMA Donation Fund, and this is introduced by Ms. Dyche.
Pretty straightforward. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Um all right, with no comments from the public, comments from the council?
Uh Madam Chairman, I'd like to have third reading on this tonight also.
Thank you, I was gonna ask for that.
Okay.
Um all right, any comments from the council before we move to uh have a vote on moving this to third reading? No comments? Uh right, so uh we have a motion on the table to move to third reading.
Second.
And the second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Ms. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Hi.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
And Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, thank you. So we'll move on to third reading by title only.
An ordinance on third reading by title only creating section two dash four one oh point four in chapter two of the Michigan City Municipal Code to create an Emergency Management Agency, EMA Donation Fund, and this is introduced by Ms. Dyche.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Prespolinski, a second by Councilman Paul Prespolinski, Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Hi.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jacobs?
Hi.
We have nine in favor.
This ordinance passes. Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Um our second ordinance um by title only on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only amending ordinance number four five nine eight, commonly known as the twenty twenty-two Salary Ordinance to increase the annual salary for the Deputy Fire Chief position. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and co-sponsored by Ms. Tillman, Mr. Simmons, Ms. Dyche, and Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Um any comments by the sponsors? Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick?
Oh, sorry.
Your light is on, okay. Any comments from the sponsors? All right, any comments from the the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have.
Second.
Uh motion by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick and a second by Councilman Tracy Tillman, it was faint, but I heard it.
It's a part.
I'll put them both down.
All right, thank you. Um Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Hi.
Ms. Don Pres- Pres- Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jacobs?
Hi.
And Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Nay.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
All right, the ordinance passes. All right, Ms. Nyla, our last ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance on third reading by title only amending section one oh two dash forty-six in the Michigan City Municipal Code known as Arboris License to amend the license application and related procedures. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons, Mr. Don Prespolinski, and Ms. Dyche.
Any comments from the sponsors? That's Councilman Don.
Uh, couple things, uh what this is gonna do is bring the arborist tree trimming uh segment of Michigan City businesses, I should say, of Michigan City under uh regulations, and make them a more regulated business. Uh so that things that are happening right now in the community won't be uh happening, and and if I may, just real quick, I just wanna name off a few of the things that when this is passed, what the uh companies will have to do, which a lot of them aren't doing right now, is uh the legal name of the business and or doing business as named, permanent business, and they have to have their address, business telephone number, fax number, email, and sales tax number to the city. Uh the legal structure set business, uh proprietorship, a partnership, limited liability, or a corporation. Uh the name of the individual is good, filling out the application for the business, including their address, telephone number, a fax number, email, and title. They have to identify all vehicles and heavy equipment owned or utilized by the business. Your address of where business stores all their vehicles. Uh heavy equipment, machinery, and supplies at the end of each business days. For example, there have been residences, yards where there have been tree trimming companies that have set up businesses and just park all their tree trimming trucks and grinders and equipment in their side yard right next to their neighbor's home, and I'm talking four or five trucks. And then during the day, all their employees would come there, park their cars at six thirty in the morning, start all the trucks up, go to their jobs, come back at the end of the day, do the same thing. And it's, it was just a total uh upset and abuse of the uh of the neighborhood. Anyway, uh detailed description of how said vehicles, machinery, equipment, and supplies are gonna be stored at the set address. Address where the business stores firewood, woodchips, and or debris, and a detailed description of how said firewood and woodchips and or debris are gonna be stored. A copy of charter or articles of incorporation and current listings of all directors, partners, and principals. Names and phone numbers of the managers and supervisors of the applicants, business who will be available during business hours, and whether business will be chemically treated any city or private trees. If so, business must submit proof of state chemical application certification, and lastly, provisions that the applicant agrees to release, hold harmless, and indemnify the city for any claims that may rise out of the applicant's conduct or be related to the issuance of a license by the city. And I think this is a uh great ordinance, and it's well overdue to get something like this into uh into law to regulate that industry. Thank you. Make a motion to adopt.
Councilman Simmons, do you have any comments as a sponsor?
I concur with everything that uh the uh Councilman Prespolinski have addressed in regards to the ordinance. Uh I'm still kinda upset because I don't see enough movement on Odell Street, and everyone knows who I'm talking about, and the issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from the public?
Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio, see, I researched that property on the Schneider Beacon site. Uh they got a commercial operation going on property, it's all zone vacant residential, that needs to be shut down. Uh that he has his equipment parked on on property that's owned by the city, that all needs to be removed. I have the same problem right across the street, I have a a junk plot longstanding, Mr. Bill Presscheck's play. I talked to Councilman Prespolinski about that. That needs to be, I tried to acquire that property. Um he, his buddy uh redeemed the, my, my, my tax lien, we, something needs to be done about that too, just thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Yes, Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Um I was at the Board of Works meeting, and I listened to the residents that brought this thing forward. And Odell Street isn't the only place that that's happening. And I concur with uh uh Tom, that uh there are a lot of properties around that have problems. And you know, Tom, there's one individual that regulates the city departments to do their job. It's not me, okay? All we can do is be vocal. So we, we have, we have problems, and then um I think that this is an updated ordinance and in uh hopefully that is gonna make some movement on a couple, there's a couple, there's a property in the second ward that needs to be uh needs to be addressed. So anyway, I, I already made a motion, but I didn't get a second, so I'm gonna
Yep.
remake that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a motion by Councilman Paul Prespolinski and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Hi.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Hi.
And Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. We have no new business, we're still working through our unfinished business. And so now we are moving to public comment, and I'm gonna allow Mr. Odo to come on up. Um first, state your name and address, and thank you for being patient, thank you for coming to our council meeting this evening to speak.
Good evening, again. Um Marco Odo, I have a home at one, two, three Hancock. I've owned that since about the beginning of the century, twenty twenty-two years. Um when I first bought this home, it was a derelict. It was um burnt, I do believe, they were using it as a crack house or whatever they were doing in there. And they started it on fire. It was open for five years before I purchased it. In the process of me putting the roof and the gable end back together on this home, I ran into uh city inspector, uh Mr. Duran, Ron Duran. Mr. Duran called me down, I came down, I introduced myself, we started talking about uh the home and everything. And he asked me, well, who was gonna do the electrical and who was gonna do the plumbing? I told him that I'd have experience while I was in the military, and he says it was good enough for the military, it was good enough for Michigan City. He issued me the permit to do the electrical. Uh it took me a couple of years to get to the point that I was ready, because I was spending my money left and right, trying to drive the thing in and get the place habitable. Um during this time, I started having conversations with the plumbing inspector. The gentleman came over, I told him what I have done in the past. Uh I'm a union carpenter, by the way, I'm doing this for fifty years of my life, and I'm also a general contractor. Um he sent a service truck over, I guess about a week later. The gentleman came out and asked me to sweat a couple of pipes for him. Uh he had the copper and I had the torches and everything, and one was a half inch, one was a three-quarter, and to I, I sweated and put it together to his satisfaction. The gentleman told me, are you gonna do it in copper? And I said, no, I'm gonna do it in plastic. Go get a book at Home Depot, read the book, if you have any questions, just call. Well, in the process, I've ended up with three extra homes and a four car garage across the street from uh Fast Pack uh over off of the boulevard. Uh I've put all these houses and all these businesses together, I've done all my maintenance and everything on it. Um I haven't had a problem with it. When I tried to pull a permit for my air conditioning, I was told absolutely not. I tried to explain to the lady my experiences and things that I've done in the past. Um I've now finally gotten ahold of a gentleman that is going to do the business for me, but it's costing me an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. Um I feel that the building department is being a little bit too excessive in people that are qualified. If I can rough this thing in, and it will pass the inspection, um and then when they come back and it's finalized, this is my home. I'm, I'm, I'm not doing it for anybody else, this is my home, this is what my problem and and this is why I'm here this evening. Now, on November sixth of last year, my home was busted into. Um broken entered the place, the gentleman used the commode, and I um winterized everything, so the toilet was not flushable. He then went up into my bed and passed out and urinated all over my sheets and everything. When I finally got ahold of the police, and the police called me, one of my neighbors called me, I had him call the police, and the police came over. They told me that my car was pushed out of the garage. Not only was he trespassing, not only did he break and enter, he had grand theft auto involved in this thing. Well, they were more concerned at securing the house than anything, which I understood at the time. And I called them back a couple of days later, and I asked them about it, when they were gonna do a DNA test on the sheets. And I told them who had access to my house and everything, never heard a word back from the police department. I come back here in June, and I went to the police department and talked to the detective that's in charge of it. And he told me that they're still looking for the gentleman, and he was suggesting that I was uh getting out of line with this man, and I told him absolutely not. It worked for me, he came over to my house a couple of times, he'd gotten very belligerent. And I had two or three witnesses at the time, and I told him, I come into my house and we'll talk about what is owed, what the business is, and we did. Uh I paid him his money, I told him, please do not come back to my property. It's just gotten to the point, um I'm no longer a soldier, I'm no longer a mercenary. I'm not going out chasing people down, and I think I've done things to my home that I can't prove. But if the police would have looked in the toilet, they would have seen. Uh he left a deposit there that they could have got the DNA off of, and they could have got it off of the bed.
So, so Mr. Odo, what I'll, what we'll do is uh get this over to the, you, you're, the complaint to the planning department and um to the police department?
I've been to the police department, and they told me that it was all stale um evidence.
Okay.
Um I understand this, but DNA does not age, DNA does not go bad. And all they had to do was come over and take the samples, and and they would at least have put the person, the perpetrator on my property. Uh this is all I was asking for, find this person, when you do uh uh get him, now you've got something that you can substantiate what I'm saying, he was there and he wasn't supposed to be there. Um I don't know if the police need to have a uh Um, I don't know if the police need to have a uh, change of policy whenever they have something like this. But whenever anyone's arrested nowadays, the first thing they do is they take a swab of them and they put uh, uh, the DNA into the files.
Yeah.
If we've got these uh, instruments and we've got these uh, things, why aren't we using them?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for um, coming to the council meeting and and speaking up. Uh, we typically go three minutes, but um, you weren't, no, that's all right. You were in the middle. I didn't wanna, you know, so and uh, we're, we're uh, doing pretty good. So I appreciate you speaking up, but we'll, we'll get this over to them. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Um, any additional comments in the public? Yes.
Ernie Callahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Uh, I got a couple of questions or issues to bring up uh, about our city. It it, my wife was mentioning it as we were riding around in the car, all, all the trash that's thrown around. I mean, it's, it's getting bad. And do we not have a vector control anymore? I mean, you see these new sidewalks and then you see all the grass growing up in between the cracks. Nothing's being maintained in the city anymore. It's sad for people to come into our town and see this stuff. Makes them not want to come back, I would imagine. Thank you.
Mr. Ernie, so I, before you, I I just, you said you had a couple of things. I just wanna make sure that was it. That was it? Okay, okay. I'm just making sure. Yes. You?
Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I got a few things to complain about. One of my big pet peeves, I'm sorry, I forgot the mic. Um, uh, it's graffiti. We do have a graffiti ordinance on the books that went on. It was something that Mayor Oberly pushed when he first became the mayor. Now, that's something that Councilman, Senior Councilmember Paul Presley voted on back during his original tenure on the, on the council. Basically established Michigan City as a graffiti free community. I'm gonna put one of the council members on the hot seat. This is in your word, Councilman Mac. Um, the rail cars that line up into the, go into the Nipco plant, every one of them is just full of gang graffiti. It's right along in front of, frontage of the singing sands trail. Uh, the South Shore Freight Rail Service, they need, they need to do a paint job on every one of those cars. It's, they should be fined for that. Um, I've been seeing a lot of rash of graffiti. It's, it's gang graffiti. I know for, if you decipher the group, you go research and decipher the graffiti, there's two street gangs that are active. That feels very actively strong. And I think this is a source of all the shootings and killings that are going. One is a, a street gang that's called the Bloods. You'll see their symbol. They'll say BK, that stands for blood killers. Another one they'll use is called MOB. That represents the Members of Bloods. The other I've been seeing, it's from a gang. It's a Mexican street gang. They're called the Norteos. They're derived from northern Mexico. We've have a, we've been having a growing Hispanic population. I've been seeing a lot of that lately. That the graffiti around the city needs to, really needs to, we need to get like kind of like Nora Reister does with the trash. When we see the graffiti, we need to get out maybe on a monthly basis and get out and, and clean out the graffiti. They tag the, the dumpsters on the Port Authority lot right there in Washington Park. It's been there for three, I try to contact the police, but it's getting so bad that you just can't keep up with it all. Um, it's just one of the things. There's another pet peeve that I have. And it kind of gives a blighting influence to the community. That we have an ordinance on the, on, on the books that says uh, for prohibited signs. Uh, it's prohibited to have a sign that of advertises businesses that, that, that no longer ever make a product, uh, a, a business that have closed and businesses or events that have taken place. You see that all over the city. When these businesses close, they need to be made to take, remove their signs. Example, J Mar Ruby. They pulled out in two thousand nine. They still got their signs up saying that's the corporate headquarters of Michigan, uh, J Mar Ruby. Uh, Burnham Glove, right down from my house. He's got a sign, Burnham Glove, BurnhamGlove.com. He's got a one eight hundred number. The one eight hundred number is out of service. The, the domain is for sale. Uh, that's changed hands five times. The gentleman does custom woodworking out of that, that building. Another Gabby's Tavern. Uh, the owner died years ago. They sold it at public auction. My next door neighbor bought it. They now have it set up in a, in one of those anonymous LLCs. You know, they don't even have a liquor license. Why is it still being advertised as a tavern? Uh, MC Supermarket, Mr. Patel tried a, on the Boulevard, he tried doing a grocery store there. Didn't last. We're gonna have another grocery store. Remove your signs. Uh, there, there, there's several others I can point to, but I go on and on. Um, I might save this for another meeting. Since we got a full council, I really would like to read the, the, the vacant structure statute again, but it might take a little too much time. I would like to get an update on the Paz Road. They're paved right now, currently the, it looks like they're just paving the county portion of Paz Road. I wanna know if they're gonna do it all the way from Johnson to Cleveland Avenue. Uh, it's, it's a disaster. It's below the Paser rating scale. It's where we got Michigan City High School at. I'd like to get an update if it's gonna be totally reconstructed or just partially. And he's all new, black top and paint. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any additional comments from the public? Any additional comments from the public? Anybody online? Nobody online? All right, comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul Purblinsky.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would like an exception to the rules because I would like to elaborate on that fire at the uh, Winsky slash Pullman uh, warehouse.
Okay.
Um, this weekend, there was a major fire structure that was uh, talked about earlier uh, at the uh, west side of Michigan City at the old uh, Paint and Wood Shop for Pullman Standard, which was then bought by the Winsky family, which was then also sold. This fire, I don't know how many, how big of an alarm it was, but preceding, preceding that event, that place was a warehouse for a major employer in the city of Michigan City, an international company called Microport. The people that work at Microport make high-tech filters for air, the airline industry, for surgical uh, hospitals. Um, very high tech. And they are paid a very good wage. So that, that building was vandalized several times last year. I was contacted by the site manager uh, about was going, what was going on over there. And we ha, ha, we set up a meeting with the mayor and had a meeting with the mayor in between Thanksgiving and Christmas. The mayor said that he was gonna set up a meeting with the police chief after the first of the year. Well, that meeting never took place. Then, in two and a half week, it was about two and a half weeks ago, that place was broken into again and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of material was uh, destroyed. And now, this weekend, the place was set on fire and I, they're saying that it was over a million dollars worth of inventory destroyed. So I, I will concur with uh, Deputy Chief that the firefighters did a good job on containing that fire where it didn't spread into the other areas of the uh, facility. But I will tell you this is that Mr. Bowley on the, uh, the site manager on the uh, break-in a couple of weeks ago had to raise holy cane to get the police department to send people out there and to get that assigned to a detective. And I will not elaborate on that it was a concern of this gentleman earlier that we have a, we have a real issue in this community with violent crime. And with the things that happened over this weekend, with the shootings and with this. And this stuff, we, I don't know what's going on. I know what's going on. And I am asking the council and also the mayor and the police department, that I think the fire department's doing their job that something's gotta give here, because we cannot tolerate this kind of stuff. I mean, the state fire marshal was here and he's actually connected to uh, um, I think Homeland Security. So this is a, a major, major thing, just like the shootings. What? I guess the bottom line is this is I'm fed up. And if, I would say what I really feel like, but I, I don't wanna, I'm really, really disgusted. And I had a car stolen from me. I had a car stolen from me. This is just a simple example. It took my brother to raise cane with the police department to come over there and look at my neighbor's cameras after a week. And anybody knows that those cameras, that film was already wiped because usually a system wipes itself in seventy-two hours. But I will say this, you know what? The car stuffs in Michigan City are still there. Crazy. This is the, I don't, I'm just totally beside myself. And I, I won't elaborate any, anymore on that fire, but it's really sad because that could be a crucial factor on that company staying here. I also wanna make a comment on uh, do we ever get a breakdown on uh, like the events down in Washington Park, like with the Sandcastle event and uh, things like that? And will we get a report from the fire department? Is that in the code on this fire? I don't think that's in the code. The, the, we'll get a formal report to the council or even to the Board of Works. But uh, also I think that we need to look at uh, code, uh, recodification on our codes. I think that's due. And uh, I wa, I wanna say that, that I really, when people come up here and talk about these things, it, we, we know what, we know, but it's just like today. The mayor walked out of here when it was time for comments by the council. And I think that if you can't, if you can't face some of the music, then if you can't handle the heat, need to get out of the kitchen. That's the bottom line here. And I also wanna make a comment about the Board of Works about denying a request that I made for lightage on Wall Bash Street and also uh, removing of abandoned telephone poles in the city. That was on the list. They were working on it last year and they removed it from the list. Also, and I forgot to tell you, I forgot to tell Councilwoman Tillman that they are removing a light over there where they're putting the Dunkin' Donuts in. So here's what I'm getting at. We talked about lightage in the, in the neighborhoods. We spent money or we did an update on LED lighting that was supposed to save us money, so we should have all kinds of of ability to put lights in our neighborhoods. We should have twice as many lights out there. So you see, this is all, as far as I care, is BS. And I'm tired of it. Somebody better an, come up here and answer the questions. Like I said, if you can't handle the heat, get out of the kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paul Purblinsky. Yes, Councilwoman, I'm Dahlia Jigus.
All right, um, I, I have a message from the LaPorte County Health Department. They are having a couple of vaccine clinics for school vaccines for kids that, you know, need vaccines for school. And they're from ten to six on July twenty-ninth and, and July thirtieth and ten to six PM, eight sixteen. So that means August sixteenth and August seventeenth. And that's at the LaPorte County Fairgrounds. To get more information, please contact the LaPorte County Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, council comments? Any, Councilman Don Purblinsky?
Ernie, chime in with what you were saying as far as litter in the city. I mean, on a scale from one to ten, I know there's probably more important things, but I'm gonna comment about litter in Michigan City. Uh, it's all over. It's all over. And I, I can tell you that I have participated in street cleanups, park cleanups. I continually go and do it on my own and pick up trash here, pick up trash there. I don't know why individuals, and I'm not just talking about a candy wrapper, you know, coming out of a car. I'm talking about McDonald's bags full of wrappers, just tossed out the windows. Uh, I mean, if you want a first-class city, I guess somehow we gotta get to the population to ask them to please don't throw your gar, don't litter. I mean, what, what are we all taught when we're what, three years old? Hey, pick that up and put down that garbage can over there. Okay. So that's my comments on there. I mean, I don't know if the city is ever gonna be able to rectify that. I mean, I see some worse spots in other cities, but I think it is an issue. Okay? Uh, and to go right along with that is, and I understand people have garage sales, yard sales, whatever kind of sales. And that's fine. People are trying to make a little bit of money. The thing that I'm gonna ask the public, and I know we don't have an ordinance on it, we're not gonna get that involved with that, because it was bigger fish to fry. But if you're gonna have a garage sale or a yard sale and you're gonna put signs up all over the city, go back on Monday, take them signs off the telephone poles or in the yards, wherever you got them stuck at, and throw them out. The city does not have a crew of people to go around and take those signs off these uh, poles and out of the corners, lots and things like that. All that, all that does is litter our city and make our city look bad. Uh, I brought it up at the Order Works meeting yesterday. And I know we're all aware of the purple Nipco lights, especially on Franklin Street and especially on Cleveland Ave. I thought maybe it was a different type of technology. Then I come out, I learned that there's a supply chain issue with some part of these lights that Nipco is trying to get. So what I told the Board of Works, and I'm gonna wait for a response, that I don't believe the city should be paying the full expense of what we're gonna be charged for these lights. Because we're not getting our full lighting. I mean, the purple light, if something's going on, yeah, I mean, I can see when I'm right on top of it, but we all know light, light and purple light is two different things. So don't charge me for something that's malfunctioning. Charge me a quarter of the rate or a half the rate, whatever it is. So the mayor, the Board of Works and the city attorney are gonna investigate it and are supposed to get back at the next Board of Works meeting to see how the city's going to uh, resolve that. And getting into the uh, violent crime situation that we have here in the, in the city is that on July twenty-eighth at New Hope Baptist Church, the chief of police has called for a community the chief of police has called for a community meeting, community workshop to discuss these issues and see what we can do as both a police department and both as a community, how can we start addressing these issues? And finally, on August the first, if you haven't heard, Nipco is planning for a rate increase. And Nipco wants a rate increase because now they have to clean up this coal ash up here at the generating station. So for the mess that they made, they're charging the consumer now to pay for their cleanup. So if you want to, and, and it was a special, we got the committee from downstate. I don't remember the person. Yeah, OUCC, yeah, to come to the council chambers, to come to Michigan City. So that meeting's gonna take place on August the first at six o'clock. If you want to discuss or express your displeasure, I would encourage you very much to come down here, fill these council chambers and express your opinion to these folks. Instead of waiting until you get your Nipco bill in October or whenever with another rate increase on it. With that being said, thank you very much.
Yes, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Um, thank you, Madam President. I just have one thing, just as a reminder that on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, we have the Michigan City Back to School Rally that would be held at um, Yule Field, the O Elston, um, so adults you're to be present with your child. Um, there's gonna be a, a lot of different exhibitors um, there. So if you're available, backpacks, um, Franciscan will be there. Um, a bunch of different entities um, presenting their businesses and things that will benefit physicals for um, athletes, for basketball, for football. So just a reminder, bring your children out. Um, there'll be fun games, um, snacks, things as such. So, and then again, that's July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two from eleven to three PM.
Any comments online from council members? Nope, nope. Any additional comments? Well, you all um, covered all the, the comments I had as far as announcements. Um, also there, it will be a rally uh, prior to the uh, hearing at six PM. Uh, by just transition prior to the uh, Nipco public hearing. Also, you can next door in the uh, Your Beautiful Lot. Um, and you can also send written comments to the OUCC through August tenth. Uh, and, or speaking at the public hearing again at six PM. I know that we have an ordinance that, well, I mean, a a resolution that um, was passed that will be read into the record um, that evening. Um, and then also just in, in, in general, as far as crime. Um, you know, the building on the west side was one thing, but there have been multiple, just like um, Councilman Paul uh, Privalinski stated that, you know, that's been going over a year, but we've had a break-in at Elston, at the YMCA, we've had break-ins at other um, businesses that I, I won't name today. Um, again, we're seeing an uptick because I believe um, we as a council are gonna have to take a stronger stand. And I know that some things are gonna be coming to us on cameras. Um, I did present at the last meeting, um, a, a pilot for motion detector, detection lights, um, a, a hundred lights in the neighborhood. Um, you know, so we're gonna make, make some hard decisions, you know, in these upcoming weeks on, you know, uh, letting people know that it's, it's unacceptable and we don't want you here if you're gonna commit crimes. And we're gonna have to ask that people be charged to the fullest. And I, you know, we talk about, you know, we talk about, you know, when, when, when people are arrested and, you know, we all talk about how, how good our kids are and, and all of that, but at this point, I, neighbors are scared. Uh, neighborhoods are suffering. Businesses will leave if we don't step up and get these cameras, get these lights. Uh, all of the different things that we're talking about. I know I've asked the redevelopment commission to step in on some of these shot spotters, uh, this shot spotter um, technology. And businesses that I've spoken to said they'll buy into the cameras. So I think everybody's at a, this is, we're at a boiling point right now, um, in the community that is to the point where we need to throw everything at it. Um, to make sure that, uh, we do our part in this. Um, one community, community meeting is not gonna fix this. Um, it won't. It's gonna take us supporting the neighbors in the neighborhoods and for them to feel safe. Uh, and whatever they request and need, not necessarily what we want to impose on them in some cases, but we do need all of our entryways secured with, with cameras so that we know who is coming in and out of the community. And once they see those cameras, maybe they'll stay out. Um, I know we see, you know, the data's there, but we need people to know that, don't come to Michigan City if you, if you're gonna be, you know, doing, and, and we need to make sure they are prosecuted um, to the fullest. And I think um, all of us are shaking our heads and we all agree. But um, we gotta, we gotta spend the money. So we, there's some things for us to think about um, in the weeks ahead. So with that being said, um, a call for adjournment. Yes, um, Councilman Paul.
Madam Chair, I concur with you fully on, on, on things that we have discussed. And, and I think that we need to have, call a special meeting and uh, pass off, start, start this because we're at a, we're at a transition point here. And that the administration's not gonna do anything and if we gotta take the lead, we have to take the lead. Thank you, Madam Chair.
A call for adjournment? I thought you were gonna do that.
A soul move.
Thank you. Um, thank you, everybody for chiming in and, and speaking up and, and watching um, out there on Facebook and on alcohol. Thank you.